Mr. Viera?
Here.
Doctor Vogt will be absent this evening. Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Here. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America. And the Republic of America stands. One nation, under God, and in the Father, and in the Son, and in the Holy Spirit.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Employee of the Month for the month of January 2020. As of December 8th, 2019, Kathy McNulty celebrated her 39th year working for the city. She's always professional, friendly, and helpful. She is a spark plug and keeps the Health Department running smoothly. Her historical knowledge regarding the city of Long Branch and its government and the Health Department is unperiled. She is organized, funny, deeply respected. Her kindness towards others, especially her coworkers, are well-known. She is highly cherished. She is a highly cherished employee. Kathy is a consummate professional. She helps the city in many other areas such as working all elections and attending free rabies clinics. She volunteers to help the emergency management during the multi-week response for Superstorm Sandy. Have a question concerning the Health Department's financial and fiscal workings? Ask Kathy. You want to know about employee timesheets, benefits, personnel records? Ask Kathy. Director not available? No problem. Kathy has directed the Health Department's operations on behalf of the residents in the absence of the director. Kathy McNulty is diligent, motivated, and seeks to continually improve. The saying most accurately reflects Kathy is, "You get the very best every day." In short, Kathy does a job and much, much more. She has demonstrated many times her unique talents. She is still, after all these years of working, willing to go above and beyond. Kathy McNulty is truly an exceptional and an exceedingly prized employee of the city of Long Branch and the Health Department. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
Council President Dangler will read the certificate, but I just wanted to say that what I'm about to read here really was put together by all of us here on the City Council. And again, I want to thank you all for being here. So I want to briefly talk about a group of remarkable children who are here this evening. So last spring, elementary school students, as many of you know from the Katroblon School, came to a City Council meeting urging us to consider banning single-use plastics. I understand they eliminated straws in their school cafeteria, they met with the First Lady of New Jersey, went to Washington to talk with our leaders about banning single-use plastics, and then came home to here in Long Branch to ask us to crack down on plastic waste. One student, Diego, said, "We hope you care as much about our future as we do." And another said, "Our future matters." A third said, "This city is going to be in our hands one day." So one day, Diego and his classmates will inherit the world we leave for them. So we should leave them the best world possible because their future matters. You, the students, honestly convinced us to act. You're small but mighty, so never stop using your voices. I want to thank your parents and your teachers for doing such a good job raising you. And finally, I want to thank all of your staff at the school for encouraging you to shine. So thank you again for being here. And again, I'm speaking on behalf of everyone.
Can we have Principal Chris Volpe, Ms. Michelle Morey, and Ms. Kelly Stone, please? This certificate of recognition is presented to the George Katron School Green Team for its fine example of leadership in eliminating plastic straws throughout Long Branch School District, for inspiring the city of Long Branch to adopt its single-use plastic ordinance. Your commitment to both the city and to the environment makes Long Branch a healthier and more beautiful place to live. Thank you.
First, we'd like to, of course, thank Mayor Pallone and City Council. We really appreciate being here tonight. And, of course, the families that always support our causes at GLC. Thank you so much. Our superintendent is here, who is always leading us in the right direction with initiatives. We have several board members here, Dr. -- Mr. Colvin, Mrs. Peters, Mrs. McCaskill, and all these lovely children here. And, of course, two really dedicated teachers, Mrs. Morey, Mrs. Stone. We couldn't do this without them. They're responsible for everything we've accomplished in the last five years. So thank you so much. We really, really appreciate you inviting us again. The boys and girls here have practiced a little thank-you poem. So they're going to take it away and hope you guys enjoy all this. So thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
It's up to you.
One song could spark a moment, one flower can wake the dream.
One tree can start a forest, one bird can herald spring.
One smile begins a friendship, one hand clap lifts a soul.
One star can guide a ship at sea, one bird can frame the goal.
One vote can change a nation, one sunbeam lights a room.
One candle wipes out darkness, one laugh will conquer gloom.
One step must start each journey, one word must start each prayer.
One hope will raise our spirits, one touch can show you care.
One voice can speak with wisdom, one heart can know what's true.
One life can make the difference, you see, it's up to you.
One child can share a dream to make the world a better place.
One dream can unite a city to create a more sustainable space.
You listened to our message, you heard what we had to say.
You took our words, you took our words to heart and did not let them waste away.
You worked so hard, very hard, to make our dream come true.
Less plastic used in our city, and that's because of you.
Thank you, Mayor Pallone and City Council members.
Next, we have recognition for our first annual holiday decorating contest winners. May I?
I just wanted to briefly thank everyone who participated in the holiday decorating contest. We brought this back, many of you may remember it was a decades-old tradition, so our town could show off the holiday spirit. And it also makes our city look great. So everyone did a beautiful job. And again, I want to thank all those who participated, and we look forward to an exciting holiday contest next year as well. President?
Do we have a representative from Ron's West End Pub? Ron's West End Pub is the winner for decorating businesses, and they have won a $200 gift card to Home Depot. Thank you. Next, can we have a representative from the Saperro family? They are one of the winners for the residential home decorating. They have won a four-pack of Long Branch Season Beach Passes. The next family, Bowman and Lutz. Is there a representative from the Bowman-Lutz family? Well, we'll make sure that they certainly get their award. Their award will be the same, a four-pack of Long Branch Season Beach Passes. Is the third someone from the family of Carol Brannan?
Ocean Point Towers.
This is what -- She is from Ocean Point Towers Tenant Association, and they also have won a four-pack of Long Branch Season Beach Passes.
Thank you.
Can we please have Ms. Jill Carreri? This certificate is presented to Ms. Jill Carreri and her science classes at the Long Branch Middle School for their festive enthusiasm in supporting the first annual Long Branch Holiday Decorating Contest by creating a winter wonderland entrance into the classroom. We'll just give it a minute if you, the rest of you don't mind, as the students are getting ready to get their coats on and go home. Thank you all for coming again.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Abstain.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the second reading of Ordinance 1-20 entitled, "In Ordnance Amending the Ordinance Establishing Titles and Setting Salaries for Certain Employees for the City of Long Branch for the Year 2020." The ordinance was introduced January 8th, 2020. I need a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. If there's anyone in the audience that has any comments regarding the ordinance, please step to the mic, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will be given five minutes and may only speak once.
Vincent Laporte, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. The salaries mentioned here, minimum, maximum, 2020. We have the Chief of Police from $30,000 to $205,702. Then we have the Director of Public Safety from $75,000 to $211,547. Director Martin, why in this ordinance is there the mention of the Director of Public Safety when it's been repeatedly stated at these council meetings that that position doesn't exist in this city?
We keep titles open in the city, just in case they're ever filled. There's a couple of positions on here that don't have actual employees tied to them.
Mr. Martin, another question. Outside of a patrolman's position, can you confirm that there is a minimal 12% increase between rank outside what is negotiated in the Police Department?
Is that in this ordinance?
12% differential.
Is that in this ordinance?
You have titles here that go from patrol officers, $11 to $30. My question concerns, can you confirm there's a minimal 12% increase between rank outside what is negotiated? No.
If you're describing the non-uniformed, non-union uniform positions, those are for Class II specials, Class I and II, not anyone involved in the PBA or the SOA unions.
All right. But between the Chief of Police and what you just mentioned, is there a minimal 12% increase between the rank in the Police Department?
I would have to research and confirm.
All right. And finally, we have non-union elected officials. We have the mayor, $8,000, councilman, $3,500, should be councilwoman as well, $3,500 each. I'm objecting to this. I think the pain and suffering inflicted by the mayor and council and the backstabbing of the people on a campaign pledge by awarding Kushner companies a 30-year tax abatement warrants no pay for the mayor and council whatsoever. And whatever losses were done to the residents of this city with the 30-year tax abatement, the taxpayers I'm talking about, the mayor and councilmen should put together a fund to reimburse them.
Hi, Ernest McNulty, born in Long Branch, raised, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So I think, this is not the public portion, right?
It is.
It's on the ordinance about the salaries, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Just --
Now, we're talking about money of employees and police, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. Is this the ordinance that's specifically about police, or is this about employees in general?
Employees in general.
Okay.
Non-union employees.
Non-union employees. So then, there's nothing here that we're talking about police, salaried full-time police, right? No. Employees.
Other than the police chief.
Other -- that's my favorite subject.
Okay.
Are you kidding me?
You asked if there's --
Oh, so we can talk about the police chief's salary?
It's in this ordinance.
That's fantastic. It's in the ordinance. Which one are we looking at, 2020, or 120, or 320, or 420? There are a lot of ordinances here. Which one's about the police chief's salary? Which one?
120.
120. "Ordnance Amending the Ordinance Establishing Titles and Setting Salaries for Certain Employees." All right, so that really is the police chief, right? Okay. So I don't know, I just came in and I heard something about 12%. Does that mean on a quarter-million-dollar salary, the chief's getting a 12% increase? Is that, or?
No, no, Mr. McNulty, I think that Mr. Laporte's question is whether or not in between the ranks in the Police Department, there's a 12% not increase differential. And that's not in this ordinance. So this, his, I, trying to make sense of his question, I think that that's what he was talking about. It's not a 12% increase. There is a, between, you know, between a patrolman and a sergeant, a sergeant, a lieutenant, a lieutenant, and captain, there could be a differential. I think that's what he was talking about, and CFO said that he would check and see if that was true or not, but it has nothing to do with this ordinance.
Okay. Well, I think he may be feeding off what I was a few meetings ago when you brought up the salaries of the Police Department, including the chief, and it seemed like it was somewhere around $22 million budget. Am I correct? Is that in the ballpark, Mr. Martin?
No.
No? What is the total budget for the Police Department annually?
Total salary or wage is about $11 million.
$11 million? For Long Branch?
Yes.
Okay. And Fire Department was?
You discussed in the ordinance beforehand?
All right. So $11 million for the Long Branch Police Department, $11 million? Could that be? It is. You say it is, it is. So then, this ordinance is about increasing, a part of it is about increasing the police chief's salary. Is that correct? We're allowing the cap to be taken off or to give him a raise? Is that what it? I'm trying to work with you guys. Nobody wants to talk to me. Is this one specifically about the police chief getting a raise?
It's not just about the police chief.
No, no, I know that, but is it in here?
This is the salary ordinance for all, for non-union employees, and the police chief is one of them. There you go.
Okay, there we go. So can I specifically address just the police chief? So here it is, you're proposing to give a police chief a raise. I don't think you're lowering the salary, so it's got to be a raise. And I'm just wondering, who, was it in private session or wherever, that you determined since he's been made a police chief, which is, I don't know, what is it, a year ago? A year and a half ago, from Public Safety Director to police chief? What would the public say that he has accomplished or failed to accomplish, or in fact, put the city at risk, meaning lawsuits, maybe misconduct, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So what you're going to propose here, and that seems to be only Mr. Laporte or myself up here, I don't know why everybody else wouldn't jump up and complain, that you're going to take one of the highest-paid police chiefs that I know in Monmouth County, I know it's over $200,000, it's a lot of money, right? And then you're proposing a salary increase. And we just finished the Superior Court with Judge O'Brien in October on the Laporte case, where Judge O'Brien, and I'm hoping that you'll get the transcript, actually referred to civilian Roebuck, Public Safety Director, criminally for what he did. He reversed the case, he reversed Siri's case, Bassin's case, and LaRaca's case, right? And the order from Judge O'Brien about now-police chief Roebuck, he committed, am I timed up?
Time's up, sir. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the third reading of Ordinance 1-20 entitled, "In Ordnance Amending the Ordinance Establishing Titles and Setting Salaries for Certain Employees for the City of Long Branch for the Year 2020." I need a motion to adopt the third and final reading advertised according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the second reading of Ordinance 2-20 entitled, "In Ordnance Amending Chapter 325 Vehicles and Traffic Code of the City of Long Branch, Article 2, Schedule Section 325-26, Schedule 2, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets of Bath Avenue." This ordinance was introduced January 8th, 2020. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. I'm only going to speak once.
Ernest McNulty, born in Long Branch, near Bath Avenue, now live in Asbury Park. This specifically talks about Bath Avenue, and I went to school right there, I still walk up Bath Avenue all the time. And it seems to me, I guess you might feel that whenever I come here, I disagree with all your ordinances and everything that you do since you've been elected and sworn in, and that's a fact, I do. So there's no reason I can't come up here and express it. So every time I come here, you're, you know, accommodating what to me seems like an overflow of pure village that you've created, like a Las Vegas there, that brings in tens of thousands of people to kind of invade Long Branch. Of all the nice people who pay most of the taxes here, we're not on pilot programs, we're not on tax abatements, you know, that's all over there. But what happens is, those people come here three months out of the year, they don't pay school tax, they got tax abatements, they really, really challenge the services of the city, and they give back nothing, and then they bring in friends and people to, whatever, get drunk, commit crime, et cetera, and live in million-dollar condos, which none of us can afford, at least from Long Branch and Asbury. And then you keep accommodating the streets to them, you know? End of Second Avenue, you open up a cigar shop, a bar, and right away, you start infringing on the people's nice homes where they could park now because, why? Somebody opens up a bar. So here it is, Bath Avenue, you're not even, not even naming the specific streets, and I don't know, if, are we talking about just during the summer months or all year long? Mr. Renone?
This --
This would... Mr. Lepore, this is, this is...
I'm Mr. McNolly.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. McNolly...
Put your glasses on.
This is a ordinance change for pedestrian safety around the school. You, you're mentioning Pure Village and summer people. I'm confused. I'm sorry.
Well, I'll unconfuse you. These developments that Asbury and Long Branch are putting in are bringing in thousands of cars and tourists and people that affect everything of the nice thirty thousand people living here and the nice fifteen thousand people living in Asbury. And for you to think that they're unrelated, I take exception to that.
But you're saying that it's three months in the summer...
I don't care if everybody jumps in. Go ahead.
We're talking about the nine months during the school year, so I think we just have, I think you're a little confused, but maybe I could be mistaken.
Well, you think that, you think about everyone, but we think that about you. So, the question is, is this for twelve months?
No, it's, well, it's two-hundred-and-twenty-two feet on Bath Avenue, the north side by the school, and it's for year-round. So that's all it is. That, it's prohibiting parking at a specific location by a school.
Can I ask a confused question?
Sure.
Why didn't you just write that here?
It is. It's in the ordinance. You have the agenda. If you would go back and take the time to read the ordinance, you would read the ordinance and it would...
One of these that, that, I can't read with a microscope? Is that where it is?
I don't know. I have it in front of me. I wear, I bring my reading glasses. Well, you know, us older guys have trouble reading sometimes. I use these readers, so I can read it.
Speak for yourself, all right? I don't wear glasses, but this is very tiny. So anyway, we're only talking near the school?
Yeah, two-hundred-and-twenty-two feet.
And we're talking, we're talking for student and school safety?
Correct.
Okay, that's a great thing. That's a great, see, but I misunderstood. But if, it goes beyond that, and Second Avenue and all these other ones that you propose, every time you do, even though I'm from Asbury, I'm going to come back here and complain because as long as you keep catering to that Pure Village crowd and impacting the rest of the people, there's a lot of people, a few of us are going to come up and, you want to call a complaint or, or maybe we're confused? Anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the third reading of ordinance two-dash-twenty entitled, "Ordinance Amending Chapter Three-Twenty-Five Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of City of Long Branch, Article Two, Schedules, Section Three-Twenty-Five-Twenty-Six, Schedule Two, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets, Bath Avenue." Need a motion to adopt the third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance three-dash-twenty entitled, "Ordinance Amending Chapter Three-Twenty-Five Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of City of Long Branch, Article Two, Schedules, Section Three-Twenty-Five, Three-Thirty, excuse me, Three-Twenty-Five-Dash-Thirty, Schedule Four, yes, Schedule Five, Parking Time Limited Certain Streets, Ocean Avenue North." This ordinance was introduced January eighth, 2020. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding the ordinance, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You may speak for five minutes, and you will only be able to speak once.
Hi, Ernest McNolly. Born in Long Branch, living in Asbury Park. I really don't enjoy this. I don't like it. And, you know, I'm not a full-time resident here, although I have family and church and things here. It's just amazing that you'd prepare an agenda like this that impacts so many people who live, like me, live three oh one Second Avenue, raised. All this stuff affects all the people who now live there, and there's nobody coming up, like everything's okay. It, it looks like what you're doing is taking every single enjoyment of parking near our homes and near their homes now, and you're just giving it away to unknowns. I'm going to guess it's like at the proliferation of the bars and clubs you're opening and cigar shops and, and endless things that you seem to be openly that are, quote, not family, and they're not for the thirty thousand residents here. I mean, most people here feel disenfranchised. The beach is too expensive. There's no parking. You know, where are you going to get a nice meal? At Pure Village for a hundred dollars a person? I mean, you're, you're building like a tinsel town here. And, and, and we campaigned and elected you all to represent the thirty thousand people. I don't know how many people live in Pure Village, but I'm telling you, they, they have your ear and, so, so what is this now? Another, another... "Ordinance Amending Chapter Vehicles and Traffic Code of the City of Long Branch," parking time limited on certain streets, Ocean Avenue North. What does that mean? Ocean Boulevard?
Here's, so you want me to read you the fine print?
You know what? You would do that for me?
I would do it. It's a hundred-and-sixty-foot length on the, on the west side of Ocean Avenue North. It begins at the northwest corner of Jolene Avenue, and it's down a hundred-and-sixty feet, and it creates a thirty-minute time limit for parking between May first and September thirtieth.
So that's for Pure Village, like run-ins and people? Kind of. Isn't that right? Where, notice you got Ocean Boulevard, then you got Ocean Ave...
No, it's actually not anywhere near Pure Village.
Is that the north side up by Jolene?
It's north of it.
Isn't, isn't that near a mall? In other words...
It's near Strallos, Mr. McNolly.
There you go. So this way, people have thirty minutes to go get an ice cream. Am I correct?
There you go. Help the local business.
You know what? See how we can work together?
There you go.
So, so my, my position is, you know, you keep adding these things. It's, and I think in a lot of people's mind, it's too much, like, you know, remember Carvel? I guess, what is it called now? It's not even there anymore. So now, we have Strallos, and that was a strange deal. Look how that came about on the Pure Village condemnation or whatever that was, the takeover of everything, right? Wasn't that somebody that got a place to put an ice cream store because they owned some property where Pure Village wanted to be? I don't know. Maybe, but there's something with Strallos and that whole parking. So, so that's what it is now? Thirty-minute parking near Strallos? How many months? Just May to September?
May first to September thirtieth.
Okay. So, am I correct that a lot of these things, I don't want to keep coming up, but it's going to seem like everything is going to cater to either directly or indirectly the strip malls and Pure Village that are, really have nothing to do with the rest of the city, anything west of Ocean Boulevard. So I guess everybody gets what they want, these businesses and those three-month people that come here. It, it's for them. I, I, at least the people I talk to here in Long Branch can't afford to go over there even for thirty minutes. So, how about them?
Well, the safety for the, the...
I'm sorry?
To one that we just, just adopted, safety for, for the students, we think that's important.
That is important. I agreed with you on that.
Yes, you did.
When you clarified it, I think that's something very nice.
And in regards to parking by Strallos, if you will, as a resident, if you park, you, the, the, the encounters come, they park there all day long, this prohibits them from doing that. So now, you can park there for thirty minutes, and the residents of Long Branch can go there, take their families or whatever, get some ice cream, sit down, and, and you got to move, move your car and go wherever they want to go, but they can't use that parking to park there all day long while they're at the beach.
Well, I'm going to say that I don't think the thirty thousand residents of Long Branch go anywhere near east of Ocean Boulevard in general. I think it's, it's its own market, it's its own people, it's its own time of the year. It's what it is, and it's beyond my budget, so I don't care if you let me park there for sixty minutes. I can't afford it. The ice cream.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the third reading of three-dash-twenty entitled, "Ordinance Amending Chapter Three-Twenty-Five Vehicles and Traffic for the Code for, Code of the City of Long Branch, Article Two, Schedules, Section Three-Twenty-Five-Dash-Thirty, Schedule Five, Parking Limited Time on Certain Streets, Ocean Avenue North." I need a motion to adopt the third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Order for introduction. This, this is the first reading of ordinance four-dash-twenty entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing, Authorizing Dedication of Property to Establish Additional Right-of-Way to Widen Broadway." I need a motion to introduce for the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for public hearing of February twelfth, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Have Kevin McManaman explain these two ordinances.
Oh, yes, if you can, please. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Miss, if, if I can, just, so there are two ordinances on, one is to dedicate certain right-of-way to the city, the other is to vacate a couple of parcels, no, not parcels or alleyways. And this is Kevin McManaman, who is redevelopment council. If you could explain to the council exactly what the, how these two ordinances interact.
Sure. I'll actually say, my, my explanation relates to the next six ordinances, four-dash-twenty through nine-dash-twenty. I have a series of ordinances that, that either vacate portions of Broadway or at paper streets or alleys in the blocks on either side, east and west.
Kevin, could you put your mic on there? I'm sorry.
Is this on now? I'm not sure.
Yes.
It is on? Okay, I actually turned it off, and I beg your pardon. This, the, ordinance is four-dash-twenty through nine-dash-twenty, effectuate a series of road vacations and street dedications in connection with the Long Branch Partners project alone lower Broadway. The vacation of a sliver of Broadway and the paper street alleys on the east and west side of Broadway will effectuate the redevelopment of those two blocks and the realignment of the roadway. It'll widen Broadway and reconfigure the roadway there on the, the west side of Ocean Avenue, up, uh, lower part of Broadway. So it's a three ordinances that effectuate the vacation of public rights of way and three ordinances that effectuate the dedication of privately-owned property that will then run to the benefit of the public by widening Broadway.
And, and the vacations, these are essentially alleyways that are all internal to property that's owned by the developer.
One is a sliver of Broadway up towards Second Avenue, but the other two are a landlocked alleyways that will effectuate the consolidation of the lots to make them developable.
Correct. And this was part of the real estate transaction that was involved between the city and lower Broad, Long Branch Partners?
Yes.
That was accomplished in, what is that, 2017?
2017 under the agreement, and then the land transaction happened at the early part of 2019. And these are, all relate to the land use approvals that Long Branch Partner got in 2018, which were amended at the end of 2019 in front of the, a Long Branch Planning Board.
And required, and that was the condition of their approval that they would, that they do all these? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. This is the first reading of ordinance five-dash-twenty entitled, "Ordinance Providing for a, for a Vacation of Portion of Broadway Right-of-Way." I need a, a motion to introduce on the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for the public hearing for February twelfth, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance six-dash-twenty entitled, "Ordinance Providing for a Vacation of the Alleyway, Providing Access from Liberty Street to Various Lots Within Block Three-Eleven." Need a motion to introduce on the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for public hearing February twelfth, 2020.
So moved.
Blackened.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance seven-dash-twenty entitled, "Ordinance Authorizing Dedication of Property to Widen and Realign the Intersection of Second Avenue and South Broadway." I need a motion to introduce for the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for public hearing February twelfth, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance eight-dash-twenty entitled, "Ordinance Authorizing Dedication of Property to Establish an Additional Right-of-Way to Widen Broadway." I need a motion to introduce the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set the public hearing for February twelfth, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of nine-dash-twenty entitled, "Ordinance Providing for Vacation of a Portion of an Alleyway, Providing Access from Second Avenue and Belmont Avenue to Various Lots Within Block Two-Eighty-Three, Two-Eighty-Three Point One and Two-Eighty-Four." I need a motion to introduce and advertise, advertise and post according to law and set for public hearing February twelfth, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Public portion, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
Blackened.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If anyone in the audience has a, a comment to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You have five minutes and may only speak once.
Do I need to introduce myself again? No. Ernest McNolly, born and raised in Long Branch, live in Asbury Park now. So, now, I, it's really unnerving to come here and nobody speaks. I mean, where are all the residents and homeowners? I mean, you're literally carving up the city here using confusing language. What does it mean a sliver? You said a sliver. And then it says a vacation of an alley. What's a vacation of an alley? Is it going somewhere? And at least from what I remember walking there to church, I think you're talking about from a more, where the first aid thing is? Is that Belmont? Where you're kind of that whole area that you're trying to accommodate the lower Broadway development to be able to handle? May to September, big influx of traffic going to the beach and Pure Village? Because it's been fine for a hundred years the way it is for thirty thousand people living here. But the sleight of hand here is you're convincing the public, who's not even saying anything, to carve up their pieces, their area of Long Branch to accommodate, again, Tinseltown, Pure Village. Pure Village gets whatever it wants. Abatements, no school tax, pilot programs. Really? It's not fair. And I know that's an opinion, but maybe someone could address my opinion? Why is everything here accommodating lower Broadway and this Long Branch Partners? I mean, who's Long Branch Partners? Is that Kushner or somebody? Probably. Now they assume other names. Everybody assume, no one, like in Asbury, no one is Istar and LLC unknown. And then when you really look, LLC unknown is Istar, or Madison Marquette, or Fasano, or the develop. Here you have your group, you have the Solomon Dweck Group, you have the Long Branch Partners Group, the Kushner Group. I mean, who's speaking for the thirty thousand people who own really nice homes here? And everything, all the attention keeps going to that uninviting thing that you allowed. I don't know how to, how you keep asking for concessions, and you disguise it by saying, we want a sliver of land. I mean, where's the planner? What's a sliver mean? Can I ask the planner how much a sliver is? Is that okay? Can we get like a foot instead of sliver? And then a definition of what an alley taking a vacation means? I don't know what a vacation means.
Do you want me to explain to you what a vacation is?
Are you gonna give me one, or are you gonna explain it to me?
So am I gonna give you an explanation, or?
No, a vacation.
Aren't those the same?
All right, let's clarify. You're gonna explain to me what this word vacation means here?
Sure.
I'm all ears.
Okay. So one, somebody dedicates to the public a right-of-way, in this case, an alleyway, probably sometime, how many years ago? Fifty, seventy-five years ago. They give the public the right to traverse along that right-of-way. So that's the public, a public right-of-way. A vacation is when you vacate, in other words, remove the public right-of-way. In this circumstance, all of the property around it is owned by the same property owner. It's no, it's not something that's needed. It's not a public roadway. It's not open. It's essentially a paper street. So we're just vacating it so that we clear the title. So when you vacate the public right-of-way, the underlying property remains with the surrounding property owner. That's all we're doing.
Okay. Can I guess, is it Long Branch Partners?
This, the, all of the, all, I think Mr. McManaman explained that all of this has to do with the zoning board approval for Long, Long Branch Partners. That's correct.
Isn't that amazing? And I'm sure all that's gonna be-
Not amazing, it's just routine.
Yeah, so Mr. McNally, may I, may I?
It's routine operating for the Long Branch redevelopment, that's for sure. But not for counties that do things according for all the residents. This is really for the developers, so let's not call it routine. Routine for the developers. I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, 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 that's okay. I just want, look, you've been, you were, you were born and raised here in Long Branch, so you probably remember a lot of this. You know, we're talking about the two properties on the east and west of Broadway, where the parking lots are, right? So you remember Citrus Steens years ago, decades ago, when we were younger, and you could go up an alleyway to get into the back of that property?
You remember John Testa, the piano guy? That's my uncle.
There you go.
Right on Broadway.
Also on Ludbrook Street, same thing. There was an alleyway there. I was young, but it was for garbage pickup or whatever. So in other words, the property owner owns everything there. There really is no alleyway anymore. It's literally a paper street, meaning it's just on paper. So that's basically, you know, that's basically, it's really just kind of cleaning up the property. And we, it's, we've done it several times throughout, you know, our administration, as every administration before has done that in every community.
It's cleaning it up for site development for the developer. Let's call it what it is.
Good evening, Council. My name is Edward Lefty Grimes. I'm from East Hanover. We're here to thank the Long Branch Police, especially Officer Marco Rodriguez and Officer Charles Conover for having compassion for a friend with stage four cancer who's dying. Was in the hospital, and the hospital was trying to take away his medical cannabis. And they were happy to give him fentanyl and all these other horrible drugs, but his cannabis that was helping save his life, they wanted to take away. And they really stressed him out to the point where they called the cops on him. And the police that came were very professional. They had compassion, and they showed Jeff nothing but love and compassion. If they weren't Christian, they sure displayed Christian values, and we appreciate that. Jeff was in another hospital in New Brunswick, and they took his cannabis away in New Brunswick also. And what, what the problem is, is Governor Murphy signed a law back in August allowing compelling hospitals to treat cannabis as any other drug. And the policy of Monmouth Medical has not reflected that as of yet. So, you know, my friend Jeff has half his liver taken out, half his colon, he has a spot in his lung, and he deserves compassion. And he definitely got it from, from those officers. He was so upset that he was gonna flush his cannabis down the toilet, and the officer stopped him from doing that. The officer knew the, how much it cost to do that and what the importance of that medicine was to him. So I really appreciate Officer Rodriguez and Conover for doing that. Jeff's here in the back. I don't know if he wants to speak or not. He's not feeling well at all, but I'm glad he made it out here tonight to, to come and thank, thank you and thank the police department for having compassion, and hoping that Monmouth Medical gets on board with, with this policy. And that's it. "They shall grow not old as we that are left grow old. Age shall not weary them, nor the years condemn. At the going down of the sun and in the morning, we will remember them." Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? I'm Mike Vingeleos. I'm from South Amboy. I just want to briefly echo what my friend Lefty here stated. We've, we've watched Jeff go through a lot of complications and a lot of struggles. I too want to thank both these officers, Marco Rodriguez and Charles Conover. They showed him compassion, and he needs it. Again, they were willing to give him all the fentanyl in the world. They wanted to do that, but they also in the process for taking away his cannabis. Well, he's been going through a lot, and the ones who have been really close by have watched it. And it's, it's not an easy pill to swallow, so to speak. Jeff, I don't want to speak for him, but the medical cannabis has helped him tremendously, tremendously. So again, I just want to thank those two officers. They showed compassion, and that was very helpful. He's been through a lot, and he continues to struggle. So again, I want to thank those two officers.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jeff Hoakes from Oceanport, New Jersey. I was the man in the hospital bed. And I'm tired as hell. I want, I want this stuff to end, this terrible stigma that the patients have to go through. The patients that are in the program are now protected by Jake's Law, which says that our cannabis needs to be treated with respect, like any other medicine that we use. And that's not the case at Monmouth Medical. And it's not the case of a lot of other hospitals around New Jersey. But there are some that are compassionate. And I applaud the two Ocean, or the two Long Branch officers that came. They came to my room to fuse the situation, were pathetically professional through the whole thing, and I can't thank them enough. But we need to do better. And I know there's a lot of towns that are banning sale of medical cannabis. I don't think Long Branch is one of them. Our groups advocated in, in Bricktown, and the folks in Bricktown said, well, it doesn't belong in the neighborhood. It belongs in an area near a hospital. If we get to Monmouth Hospital here, they don't want it on the hospital grounds. So where do we go? You know, no one's here to represent us. We have to come out ourselves, sick as we are, and plead for, to our legislators that we can get some change and some relief. And it's terrible that the law that, that is being disregarded is, is a law that came from a lot of effort from a family, the family, the Honig family, and their, their son died of brain cancer. And they meticulously petitioned their legislators to, so we could get what is now Jake's Law, that the patients are enjoying. But there's more work. We need the help of the towns, and I hope Long Branch will continue to, to not ban medical cannabis and to actually, perhaps, maybe, maybe a resolution that would help us going forward. I don't know what the answer is, but there's patients that are suffering. Thank you.
Request one minute notification. Vincent Lepore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. This evening's agenda, it's a sad moment. Resolution twenty-five twenty, back in April of two thousand and nineteen, I accurately predicted, as of tonight, what would happen, and it's happened. I'm gonna read a quote from the resolution. Whereas Long Branch Partners, the LBP UREs and Broadway Urban Renewal Company LLC, Broadway desired to enter into an assignment and assumption agreement, the assignment under which one, Long Branch Partners will assign its interest in the redevelopment agreement as amended and convey the property to Broadway. Two, the LBP UREs will assign their interest in the respective financial agreements described above to Broadway. And three, Broadway will assume all the obligations under the redevelopment agreement and the above described financial agreements, end quote. Those financial agreements, folks, are the thirty-year tax abatement. Resolution twenty-five twenty is basically about the tax abatement and Kushner. The name of the company, Broadway, is Kushner. It's happening tonight. Throughout the war, the resolution, the word Broadway is used as a generic. Broadway Urban Renewal Company LLC. Why couldn't Kushner put his name out front as Kushner Companies? What's he afraid of? Being associated with another thirty-year tax abatement? On page three of the amendment to the redevelopment agreement, it is mentioned in phase three, a three-to-five level parking deck containing five hundred and thirty-four spaces. I maintained all along, when Kushner sold that land back to the city, it was only temporary. The city conveniently land-banked the land for Kushner, so he could avoid the carrying costs. And now he's in a position in phase three to build a parking garage. Section four-six, G section four-six of the redevelopment agreement, hiring practices. There's a quote in here. "It will meet with the leaders of the building trades in Middlesex County with a view toward exploring engaging union labor in connection with the construction of some or all of the project." This is payback to the Pallone team, folks. The gravy train is alive and well with the Pallone administration and special interests. Councilman Viera, you punched your ticket on this tonight. You're affiliated with these special interests. You had a vested interest in making certain that thirty-year tax abatement came through, because the unions you're affiliated with will benefit. So much for the people of Long Branch. They got sold out for special interests by Team Pallone. The manipulations and lies of the charades of Team Pallone from April of two thousand and nineteen to tonight, on the assignment and assumption, project agreements and tonight's resolution. Page four, keep in mind, Team Pallone, the team that campaigned against Kushner and thirty-year tax abatements, the team that had the ability back in April of two thousand and nineteen to undo the harm that they campaigned against. That team in April voted yes for the assignment of the thirty-year tax abatement. Thank you. On page four of this assignment and assumption of project agreements, keeping in mind, Team Pallone campaigned against the thirty-year tax abatements and had the opportunity in April to undo the harm, appears the name, Mayor John Pallone, Charles Kushner for Broadway Urban Renewal Company LLC. The lie is profound. This document is the knife in the back from Team Pallone to the people of this city. And tonight, Council, you can gladly be called New Jersey politicians, because that's what you deservedly need to be called. Thanks for the knife in the back to the people of Long Branch.
Hi, Ernest McNally. Born in Long Branch, live in Asbury Park. Is there a problem?
No.
Oh, okay. So I'm gonna confine my five minutes to spin off the increase in salary for the police chief, and I'm gonna focus on the police chief. And since we have Mr. Lepore here, I'm gonna focus on the case. There we go. I'm gonna focus on the case of Jordan versus Harvey in Asbury Park. A law enforcement officer resigns, becomes a public safety director, citizen, continues to wear a service weapon unlawfully, continues to wear a police badge unlawfully, impersonates an offer, pulls people over, drives police cars, performs arrests, threatens people, signs summonses, right? It rises to a level where tagged on to, perhaps Mr. Renon can clarify, another case where it was clearly indicated by the Monmouth County prosecutor that a citizen public safety director is not a police officer, cannot sign probable cause summonses, cannot drive police cars, pull people over, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So in Asbury, that's what Louis Jordan was doing. He's now, I don't know, in our high school, and he was a, went to the prosecutor's office. But, you know, when you do things wrong in Monmouth County, you seem to rise to a level where you wind up right at the prosecutor and then right in multiple pension jobs, like in high schools, making another hundred fifty thousand a year. So that was Harvey. Now we have Roebuck, quarter million dollar a year guy, right? Was a police captain here, I think for six months, correct me if I'm wrong, resigns at the request of Schneider, I think, and conjunction, decides to become the public safety director, a citizen position, like most of us in this room, not a sworn law enforcement officer. Once you accept that position, you have to first resign as a police officer. You don't. Okay, what do you do, Mr. Renon?
Take a leave of absence from that position. That's what happened.
Okay.
Under the civil service rules, that's the way it works.
Okay. But, but, once that happens, call it a vacation or a leave of absence, call it what you want, but doesn't it mean he's now a citizen, no longer a police officer?
While he's on the leave of absence, yes.
Thank you. Now, Judge O'Brien, the twenty-ninth of April, I went there as a press person in that courtroom, where three times, Mr. Roebuck, as a public safety director, prevailed over Mr. Lepore, prevailed over Mr. Lepore with Judge Siri, Judge Bassin, Judge LaRaca, I believe, right? All three times, you know? Lepore is guilty, right? Now it goes to Superior Court on appeal before Judge O'Brien, October of this year. I'm there as a press person. You must, must get the transcript and order. Basically, Judge O'Brien criminalized your present chief, then public safety director, for what he did in this room, which is on camera, you can watch it, it's horrific. The judge says, how dare you? It was Mr. Grant that actually inflamed the audience. And witnesses says, it wasn't Mr. Lepore, it wasn't Mr. Lepore. And yet, Mr. Roebuck, who had a, what they call a beef with Mr. Lepore, arrested him anyway, as a citizen, right? And then, when he called for officers who were lawfully able to carry it out, they said, sir, I don't see the disorderly. Well, you know, so he does it himself. He signs the summons, right? That's against the law. Judge O'Brien, in the order, you have to get the order and the transcript, because it's not enough for you to pay forty thousand dollars to basically investigate Mr. Roebuck, Chief Roebuck now, at taxpayer costs, and then you get a judge helping you out, Judge O'Brien, with saying, hey, your guy committed crimes as a citizen, and now he was an officer, now he's back as being an officer, and now you're talking about rewarding him with a raise. Where are we going with all this? I mean, where are we, in Venezuela? Really? How, how can you not get the transcript from Judge O'Brien? You spent forty thousand dollars to investigate the police, focusing on Roebuck, and now you're not gonna get the order from Judge O'Brien? Counsel, Renon, please, I implore you, get the court order. You're gonna have yourself some criminal charges against your present chief. You're gonna have yourself some criminal charges against your present chief for what he did as a public safety director. Is that my time up?
Time's up, sir.
It's always a pleasure.
Roebuck, when in the hospital, I hear so many things about you. Look at me, piece of garbage. You look at me, I hear so many, don't walk away from me, you piece of garbage, you freak asshole.
I need a motion to close the public portion.
I'm over.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Resolutions? We could take the, the list of resolutions as a consent agenda? Need a motion?
So moved.
You need a second?
Second. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Staying.
You're abstaining on all of them, or?
Yeah.
On the, um... Twenty-five dash twenty.
Twenty, correct. Twenty-five dash twenty.
Okay. Dr. Sally?
Okay, here. Yes?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. I need a motion to approve the list of applications.
So moved.
Second.
Room call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Sally?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This'll aid in his business for the good of the order. Councilman Viera.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to congratulate and thank Kathy McNolly for being Employee of the Month, and Dr. Salvatore and the Long Branch students, the teachers and their parents, who're doing a great job. It shows us a lot when we have a, a full room with students that are interested in what we do up here, and it, it's a big positive for us, and I'd like to thank them, and good night. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wittes.
Uh, yes. I would like to thank the George Katron School for coming to us and voicing their opinion on how we should change and ban plastic, single-use plastics, and, um, want them to know that their voices are heard, and we hope they continue the effort in saving our planet. I'd like to thank, um, the Board of Education members who are here tonight, Mr. Coven, Mrs. Peters, and, um, thank you for, uh, your partnership with, with the Long Branch City Council, and we continue, hope that we will continue to have a long-lasting relationship with you. And, um, I'd like to, um, also wish, um, Dr. Vogt a speedy recovery. She had a little surgery, and, uh, I'm wishing her well. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Councilwoman Sally.
It was nice to see the students here tonight. They did a good job, and they should be rewarded. I'd also like to make a comment that this is the first year we brought back the decorating, the Christmas decorating contest, and for that, I'd like to thank the mayor, because some of the decorations in the city were really beautiful. And I also would like to thank the entire administration for the beautiful Long Branch calendar, 2020. I think everybody got a copy of it. It was in the mail, and it certainly was nice to see Long Branch calendar back again. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pallone.
I have a few thank yous myself. I also would like to thank the board members for being here today. It's nice, it's, it's really good when we, uh, go back and forth with each other and tend each other's meetings. First off, it just brings the community together, and we, we, we know what, uh, what our various groups are doing together, so thank you for being here. Uh, I wanna thank the Martin Luther King Junior Guild, uh, some of the members are here, for hosting the events this and last week and honoring Don, uh, Dr. King's life and accomplishment. Also wanna thank the library for hosting a day of service, uh, this past Saturday on the 18th, where the community assembled hygiene kits for 180 turning lives around. It's an organization dedicated to helping survivors of domestic violence live normal lives, and those kits that were put together are gonna be distributed, uh, shortly. And, uh, it was a very nice event. They had, uh, at least 50 people there, a lot of children, and it was very good. Uh, also wanna thank the volunteers at our Code Blue Warming Center for their effort and tireless dedication, literally in the, in the literal sense of the word tireless. They're there, uh, you know, from six at night till six in the morning. They've dealt with non-stop freezing temperatures over the last week and a half, and their volunteer service is really exemplary, and, uh, they really make the town pride, a town proud. The 2020 Census is looking for workers to keep an accurate count of the town's population. Census results determine the number of seats each state has in the U.S. House of Representatives, as well as how funds are spent on roads, schools, and hospitals. It offers great pay, flexible hours, and a weekly paycheck. You can apply on, uh, apply at 2020census.gov/jobs, and, uh, New Jersey's a good example of that, because in the last census, you know, we went from 14, uh, Congress, uh, members to 13, so we, we lost a congressperson in the last census. So, the, uh, the count is very important. And finally, I wanted to mention that on February 6th is the opening night of a show called Any Town. It's an original production about how substance use disorder can happen to anyone, anywhere, and in any town, and we all know just the problem that we're having both locally and nationwide with, uh, with opioid addiction. This, this performance will be followed by a brief panel discussion about the impact of substance use disorder on families, schools, and communities, and this is part of a new speaker series called Don't Give Up, hosted by RWJ Barnabas Health Institute for Prevention and Recovery in partnership with the City of Long Branch, Long Branch School District, Brookvale Community College, and Long Branch Hears. The speaker series is offered free of charge, but registration is required. You can, uh, find more information on our Facebook page, it's the city Facebook page, and, uh, I believe it is being held at the, uh, at the old high school again on February 6th, so that should be a pretty exciting night. And that's all. I just wanna thank everybody for coming this evening, and wish you, uh, wish you a great week.
Thank you. As we, uh, brought the Martin Luther King and remembering Dr. King and what he's meant to us, uh, across, certainly across Long Branch and across the country, but Long Branch has a, a week-long, uh, different things, a celebration, I'd just like to, for us to remember that we were all kind to one another, respectful to one another, uh, trying to follow in Dr. King's footsteps, and, uh, I hope that we can, can continue to have that same attitude now that his birthday is, is, uh, over, the celebrations are over, but not what he meant to us, and not the fact that we all should treat each other, uh, with kindness and respect. Thank you very much. God bless you. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second. All in favor? Opposed?